Yeah.
I'll call this meeting, special meeting.
Or work session.
Work session. The order. I'm sending you.
Terry. Chris.
Here.
Mike.
Jim.
Jim.
Here.
Cindy's here, Rochelle. And Carol.
Yeah. So, obviously, there's only one thing on the agenda. Discussion of the Historic Preservation Plan. So, this is more of a work session meeting versus any formal meeting. So, any decisions that are made by this group in terms of subcommittees, forming subcommittees, or establishing another committee for looking at various aspects of this plan can be sort of outlined here but formally voted on at the next meeting. Your next formal meeting, which will be in two weeks. So, having said that, does anybody need extra copies of the scope of work? And/or discussion, or what Jim sent out in an email?
I'll take Jim's.
So, Lisa, do you still need me to take minutes from this?
Um, just notes, notes.
Notes, okay.
Since Terry and Rochelle are not going to be here.
Okay.
Uh, or, I don't know, Terry has joined, I can't see whether or not she's joined via Zoom.
Okay. All right, so I'll just make some notes for everybody.
And we are recording this for that aspect, so we can at least watch the recording. Yeah. So, as everybody got a chance to look at the scope of work and Jim's notes, maybe at this meeting, we look at developing like a mission statement for this, for the plan, and identifying stakeholders that we might want to talk to, get input from, and developing this plan, especially in the terms of outreach, developing outreach, and maybe looking at communication and promotion. Obviously, the Fremont County Heritage Commission get their input. They're, obviously, they're a major stakeholder, the Historical Society, of course, and possibly local business owners, downtown historic district. People who have own historic properties that are either contributing or potential. I think that's the hard part, is trying to figure out what potential resources are still out there. So, does anybody have any input on a possible suggestion on a mission for developing this plan? And or any input on what you want to see in the scope of work? Was there some comments that you, things that we should add, subtract? Is it good as is? Now would be the opportunity to revamp it or adjust it?
We asked for a timeline, Lisa.
A timeline? I was thinking about a year timeline of getting from start to finish. So, we have, this would be the first work session meeting, and then within a year, we should have a final draft that would be reviewed by the city council and approved. So, that's what, that would be my guess. That's what we would, if we were able to receive that grant from the State Historic Plan, it would have been a year timeline.
Can I ask? Yes. I mean, yeah, a timeline for what?
For developing a final draft of a historic preservation plan. So, basically, all these components, all written up in a more formal aspect. Interviewing potential stakeholders, getting their input. I've sent out some examples of the Historic Preservation Plan from other communities. So, basically, that type of document would be the final product that we would be able to hand off in a year. Does that make sense?
Can I ask, I'm focusing on businesses, residences?
This would be for the whole town of Canyon City.
Okay.
All of Canyon City. So, not only the downtown, of course, but other areas in terms of potential serving of residential properties. One thing that we might want to look at is industrial properties, historic properties that were part of industries that work here, i.e., Ains Ice Storage Facility, Sock Fifteen Street, I mean, perfect building.
Do it well. Redwood.
Yeah.
They've got to be, yeah, they have pictures.
Exactly, they're all within city limits. Anything that would possibly be an historic resource within the limits is city limits.
Same here.
Yep. And, in my mind, I'll also look at historic buildings. I'm probably saying, there's only a couple, one or two. I think that's within city limits, way out there, Los Angeles area.
Yeah.
I think there is one still there. So, not only the residential and commercial buildings that you see on Main Street, but other buildings that are historic, significance.
Exits as well.
What?
Exits.
Exits, yeah. Yep. Yep. So, that's what I was thinking of, that if you think it can be done in a shorter timeframe, we could try to make that work. I think it all depends on how much feedback we, and how many, how many meetings we want to do to get the community involved, and how we want to do that. That would probably take a little more time. Scheduling. If we did, if we had a lot of stakeholders that we wanted to get involved with. Get involved in this process.
Now, from interaction I've had around the community on different projects, crossroads.
Yeah.
Out at PCC Fremont, discovered that there's a lot of people in the community that are in leadership roles, Rotary Club, et cetera, that really don't have much of a feeling for our history, natural history, our cultural history of buildings. And, obviously, we're getting newcomers as well. So, I think that there's an opportunity here to, especially related to the sesquicentennial, sesquicentennial, however you can have it.
No, you go.
To create some awareness and create a constituency for the plan, you know, with some public meetings on various topics that, you know, would be relevant.
And they do, well, I know Rotary Club has people do a presentation for long downtown meetings. New Lions is another one. And I think New Neighbors does as well.
You know, we could obviously contact in these groups or, you know, host some meetings that, and request people like through the Historical, from the Historical Society and other groups to assign somebody to participate with the development of the Historic Preservation Plan.
And we, if you wanted, we could develop or have a subcommittee focus on that aspect of outreach and getting input from those different organizations and doing those presentations. And we could have another subcommittee focusing on doing sort of windshield surveys of areas that we would like to see surveyed in the future. Because that's a, that's a big component. Any Historic Preservation Plans, what?
Both of those. Chris, all of his YouTube, all of his programs that he has done in the past year, I guess, has got a lot of the business that he's and they are all related to historic Fremont County. Yeah, I know Fremont County, but certainly a basis for production of some really good historic stories.
And that could be part of the education and communication, part of the plan that's developing that more.
Yeah, we, we use, yeah, let us use it. We have to get permission, whoever produced those.
And the museum is trying to do their aspects of presentations and things too, reporting. Not on your scale, though. Not there yet.
Can I say something? I'm not sure how much I can participate, because I'm not a part of the mission.
As a sub, yeah, as, as part of the public. And if you wanted to serve as part of the, of the subcommittee, volunteer your time in helping out with this.
I think that educating the public, new and longtime residents is important, because a lot of people don't, aren't aware of history, right? And I'm only coming from another place where I kind of participated in a Historic Preservation Commission. But things like a weekly column in the newspaper about some historic house or building or site or story. Photo galleries put in maybe the local restaurants, but places where people can see and photos of the history of the town and maybe label them, you know, and the houses and stuff like that. I mean, not only in the museums and the historical societies, but we even had a traveling one in, like, a band that went to little little festivals or, you know, like the Boston Festival and stuff like that. And just getting people to realize that there is a history and, and make it interesting, so they, you know, maybe want to learn more. Things like that.
We can, and all of those things could be included as potential opportunities in the plan on how we can educate.
Yeah. Maybe for some kind of, right.
Certainly agree with that concept, and try to factor in some feedback mechanism too, so that if somebody sees it, they can jot down a note and provide some input about, you know, what they learned, what they think is important, how it could, you know, how it figures into the community or their values. Part of the issue, I think, is that people drive by, you know, that building or the rocks across from PCC Fremont and don't realize the significance of the area of the building, the geologic formation, whatever. And without knowing that, it doesn't have any meaning, it's just a rock.
And the Allen yesterday, and the historic pictures in the back that they got from the museum. I will guarantee you, most of the people don't realize it's a historic building, historic business at all, as they're eating. So.
Even in the restrooms, you can have a couple of pictures.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We already have to agree with those pictures. So.
Are there any other stakeholders? Obviously, local business business owners. I have, of course, the, the big ones, of course, the Heritage Commission, Fremont County Heritage Commission, the Historical Society, Rotary Club, New Neighbors, New Lions, University Men's Club might be interested in helping give their input.
About like built, uh, built. They're, they're all. Is there a downtown Canyon City group still active or not?
Yes.
Is there?
Yep.
Certainly.
Downtown Business Alliance.
Yeah, I think we certainly should move that.
No, yeah, part, part possible with the business.
Do we still have anyone going to the nursing homes? For a long time, we were going to the nursing homes and presenting programs. I think these guys are involved that.
Yeah, I will be doing one this month.
Not at the Berry Park Villa, for sure.
My, it won't be this month's program, but I could do a, for sure. And I, we can do one at the museum.
I like the idea of a band. I like the idea of traveling. Something that people could walk into, sit down and watch. Some people then get out, maybe one of the Whitewater Festivals or, or the Brothers Market.
Give it resources for us, if we want to pop up tents with some display boards, you know, to get started.
Yeah, and, I mean, you've got to reach the public, you've got to be out in the public.
The Italian festival.
Yes, yes.
They have that, that information, families.
Yes. Yeah, maybe. Maybe Jean Taylor will come to those people. I will see her organized. That would be great.
So, we talked about a year, Jim. When it, you, you said kind of coordinating that with the sesquicentennial. Which is when?
What, April?
Yeah, well, it's going to start off the beginning of the year, so 2022 is the official, well, whole year. We're going to be doing something every month, every month.
Is that a specific date? That?
Well, there's going to be, what, two focus points?
Yeah. So, the actual date is in April, early April.
The first weekend in April.
But we, we're a little concerned about the weather and being able to do outdoor things and getting snowed out. So, we'll also probably do a little bit bigger community event in September. But the actual date is, is that first weekend in April.
Well, here at each festival.
Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Well, we can already get started a little bit before that, with doing things and this.
Right. Well, I just think we need to probably be at some point of being finished with this to where we cooperate that with
Yeah.
that gathering in September or whatever.
Kind of a kickoff to announce.
It's like an action plan, yeah.
And begin to get, you know, people on board who are excited about implementation.
Can ask for better dates to coincide with, so we can somehow make sure we stay on track on that would probably be good, in my opinion.
Yeah, actually, I thought a year was a long time, but actually, to be able to draw everybody in and to have a coincide, I think would be.
Well, and it takes a little time. If we want to inform people. I was involved in doing something a little similar in Arizona. And we had a series of sessions. And, you know, we found that it was useful to give people time to hear technical information or historic information or options or whatever, and then have, have a little time to think about it, to talk to their friends and family about it, to, to make sense of it. And then ask them for input, you know, kind of review and get questions, and then ask for input after they have thought it over a little bit and that we can segment this to some extent. And then that way, you're not just catching people cold, and you're not saying, well, what are your values for Historic Preservation? You know?
Yeah.
If you haven't thought about it, you don't have a clue. So, if, if this gives us an opportunity to both educate and inform, and then create a basis for really meaningful and considered input, and then move that into what our policy objectives would be. And I think that helps build a constituency then when we go to implement things. And, and there's the inevitable pushback, what are you telling me, I can't do my building? You know, at least there's a, a group of people that understand how, you know, we didn't hatch this under a basket somewhere. We developed it, you know, with community input, and it reflects real community values. And I think that's one of the things that we've got to be careful about, because on other occasions, Canyon City has requested through various planning processes, community input. And, you know, we write it up and throw it in the trash can, do whatever, you know, somebody else wants to do.
Well, if you don't have any input, essentially, that's what happens.
Well, or sometimes there isn't, and it's not, it's not reflected.
It's not followed.
So, I, I think part of what we need to do is reflect the commitment, you know, this will result in, you know, what you have to suggest being considered. It may not, you know, end up being part of the final product, but at least it gets consideration and, and gets worked through the process.
Is there any way that we could send out notices in the Water Billts? They go to everybody in Fremont County area. I was just thinking about being able to cover our, if we're talking about getting people to be, understand what we're doing.
Would that be, so something in the Water Bill would be leading them to a website and a survey?
Right, or just a little notice, just a little thing that says, hey, we're working on this, and we'd like for you to join, and here's where you go. And just make it as simple as possible, as easy to read as possible, and as easy to respond as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's the kicker, make it crazy easy.
And I think, you know, we could offer a mail, something to mail back. Or, and there could also be, if we, if we're able to have the technology to incorporate a website that would contain information and provide for feedback, I think that would be extremely useful. Not everybody will use it, but some residents might.
Yeah, we might be able to do that through either the museum's website or the city's website.
I think that'd be wonderful, if, if people had questions or, kind of like the comprehensive plan website. And their, the, the planning team that was working on that did respond to, to comments or questions that were placed there. So, it, it did work as a feedback.
Yeah, I think we, we posted something on the museum's website for a survey one time. Obviously, we didn't get that many responses, but we promoted it through different means, Water Bill, our Facebook account, the city's Facebook account.
I'm a newsletter, I mean, there are a lot of ways. We only reach 200 people, the newsletter. Out of all the 47,000 there are supposed to be in Fremont County, going Canyon City. I'm not sure, what is the population of Canyon City?
About 17,000, yeah. About 17,000.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Is that including the incarcerated? Hmm, interesting. Because they were, hmm.
So, I will look into seeing if we can put something in the Water Bill, a notice. I don't know, but I can certainly ask.
Do we want to put something together that's visually appealing? I mean, I'm thinking about the presentation, the one with Springs, that they put together now. It's very expensive and professional.
Yes, they got a grant.
So, the point is, is we, obviously, we don't want something that's going to last, that tossed to the trash, which no matter how fancy it is, sometimes that's going to happen. But on the same token, if it's too blah, for lack of a better word, that's what's going to happen to, how can we catch?
What kind of people?
Yeah, and maybe putting a historical photograph on that.
Or in line with the top, remember the bump outs. And then every senior citizen in Canyon City, so they're going to, I'm going to participate. Because that was the reason that that went through was because nobody knew it was happening.
Right, I remember that.
That's my, my example of not.
Senior citizens contact, or I've heard from elderly folks that cross the street, and they say that they feel sheltered a little bit by the bump out. That it gives them less vulnerability, you know, wa, you know, walking slow and losing a key. A car, a bishop or wife said what she thought was really bad.
Exactly. You know? Yeah, that's the whole idea.
Yeah, so it works both ways.
Okay, but we're getting on sidetrack here.
Yeah, we are getting sidetracked.
We need to pour that.
We do, got to, got to get people interested in that, to be any effective, you know.
And new residents might not know what that is. So.
Yeah, but to your point, I mean, are we going to be able to produce something like that within the year? Or is that going to be coming after we finalize our scope and?
I think we need to figure out what we would want to, if we are able to put a notice out at all in the Water Bill, where is that going to go? Is it a survey, is it more information, is it our website? We can definitely work on a survey and get an idea of what people know about historic preservation in this community. Because that, I, I guarantee you, not very many people in the, maybe one or two of the historic resources that are iconic in this area. But beyond that, they might not think of South Canyon.
Part of the way, I think.
So, we need to formulate, formulate what questions we want to ask and, and.
And what are the hot buttons? How do we capture attention? And I think one of the things is, you know, people may drive out to Berry Park, and they drive, that's outside of where it's supposed to, drive by with a hot back or a building without realizing its importance. But valuing the, the visual appeal that it provides for our community. And if, if we were to lose some of this, and so sometimes, perhaps, the way of getting people's attention is, you know, what icon, what building would you not want to lose? You know, what if somebody was going to knock down the, the?
Same cloud.
Yeah, the same cloud and replace it with a or a building like the Sunflower Bank Building on the corner of Ninth and Royal George. You know, is, is that something that would be within the acceptable, the community? So, if we can find, you know, some hot button issues, we don't have to go into a lot of detail, but get initial responses and use that as a way of anchoring some of the discussion.
I wonder how controversial this would be, would be taking a photograph of a building and, and start building and then sort of erasing it from that photo, okay? Is this acceptable or not? I'm doing it that way.
Photoshop.
Photoshop it. And do that for a couple of different buildings. Um, and do that for a couple of different buildings. Um, St. Cloud, W Warren's House, um, even the ICE, ICE plant, um, things like that, and seeing, okay, is this accept, yeah.
I worked on a project one time that envisioned, was offering options for a downtown area in a smaller.
Options.
And it, one option was leveling the whole place and building a modern shopping center with plenty of parking. You know, every downtown merchant says, what do you need? I need parking. Well, so just level the whole damn thing and put in plenty of parking. Well, the community rejected that, but they made the choice. I mean, it engaged them. They, they said, no, that's not what we want. We want to keep our historic downtown. So sometimes you have to promote.
Do the, yeah, the extreme type of thing. Um, can you envision this?
Yeah.
If this were to happen, what would you?
You'd rather have.
Yeah, what would you rather have? And what would you be willing to do to protect it? And to keep that?
It's kind of one step at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's like talking to your kids about sex. You don't tell them everything at once.
It's very sincere.
It depends on where they are.
I, I think that's a good idea. I think giving people options makes them feel more in control, more I can make a difference, that I want to do. First, they have to have the information. They have the knowledge.
Yeah. Yeah.
About the significance.
And we could do something, um, also a little more subtle, instead of having, um, okay, a historic building here, and it's gone in this photo, we could have it, a historic building, and then superimpose a different facade and different roof line, or, yeah.
There's actually, our streets department has that ability, or our engineering department actually can do that. They've got a program where you can change what building looks like. And it's like a 3D rendering of it.
Or we can put a neon sign over, uh, over buildings and give them that option. Okay. What would you see as acceptable or not?
Like a slideshow.
Like a slideshow.
And do it like the, the dog wrestling ceremony, water. And have it, you know, say it into the building's gone, or everyone's crying, but they end up.
I love it.
That's what we're trying to evoke.
Is emotion, emotion. Yeah, a personal, yeah, personal connection with that building or, um, yeah, their sense of aesthetics, even.
Well, perfect example is the Scholastic.
Yeah.
That, we're all hoping something will come of that. We're hoping the old building remains, because that was really, I guess, what we all agree, Scholastic. And, uh, so there it is. They've got a lot of publicity. They've got a lot of effort, I think.
Yeah, and there's, well, also the Abbey, too.
Yes, there we go.
Those, those are the ones that brought a lot of emotion, because there was a lot of people who had either attended that school or those schools, or knew of somebody that attended those schools, or even visited for a dance or something. So there is a lot of emotion on those, on those sites, for sure. It's the other ones, the smaller ones that don't get that necessarily, that emotion. So for example, would be the ICE plant.
Is it going to be gone?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just giving that as an example, because it's not on any real main drag. You're not really looking, not catching it out of, as you're going down Highway 15, you might not just pass it, and you realize it's there. And that's been there for over a hundred years. And it's, uh, resource, it's an example of an industry that's no longer.
Very, very important, very important.
Yeah. And it's got quite a history.
So are we bound to general initial approach, that what we're doing? I'm trying to follow Jim's.
Yeah. We're, yeah, we've gotten a little bit over the top.
Really complex, right? I enjoy, I think we put a lot of time into this, thank you.
Um, yeah, I think we, we definitely need to stay focused on, on the historic preservation plan and the, um, focusing on input from um, their various different stakeholders. And if we wanted to, I'll see what we can do in terms of a notice from Water Bill. However, we need to develop what that would go towards, like a slideshow, survey type of thing. See if we could do that.
I think sample is better, because people are busy.
Yep.
And if it's something they're interested in, they'll pack right then, they'll do something. Probably. Otherwise, they'll put another refrigerator and cover it up and, and, uh, I'm, I'm hoping we can generate some feedback somehow. So how do we get the feedback?
And we can, um, different members of the commission, uh, and staff can do presentations that and learn these.
I could have a canned slide presentation.
Yeah.
You know, PowerPoint that we could provide about the process. But again, if we do a few, uh, public meetings at the museum, people are used to coming there for informative educational meetings. And, you know, we could have it on different topics, and then, you know, just kind of slip in, well, this is going to be part of, this will, this is leading up to developing a historic preservation plan. If you'd be interested in participating, providing your input or whatever, you know, it's, but it might be a way of bringing some people into it.
We used to do, um, Old Timer Poppins, so we could revamp that. Instead of having Old Timer Poppins, we could do.
Work those.
Did you go to any of those, Chris?
I did not.
I, I was very impressed.
I looked up.
Yes.
Um.
It's surprising who showed up. So.
And we can do them at different times, uh, does it have to be coffee? Well, I don't know about wine and cheese.
We might have a better turnout.
Right, yeah.
Very impressive.
Um, city property, yeah, I don't know. Um. That would, yeah, that would be another specific, you know, choice.
Wonderful. Um, so if we develop a slideshow or something, to these various service clubs, and start with the already organized groups, and then go out to the general public as well. Because some people just don't go, they don't belong to the community in particular, especially new neighbors. They don't know who to.
New, wasn't, new neighbors, isn't it?
I never, I never heard of new neighbors, and I, uh, yeah.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
You have to know a new neighbor to hear about. I mean, you have to know someone who goes, because that's a very.
They're big.
200 and some ladies go there, too.
I think the museum is a, is a great place to convey information, and so is the library.
Yeah.
Have you been to the museum?
I don't know where it is.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's another point. We are, we are, we have a prime exam of someone that needs to be.
Well, and has an interest in history, and still has no idea where to go.
Exactly.
We have a good beginning.
And the neat thing about the museum is it's a great place to go to research your house.
Where is it?
It's on, I recommend, uh, Royal Gorge Boulevard, an old school building. We have a Allosaurus dinosaur out in front of our building on the corner.
Oh, is that?
Corner of Sixth and Royal Gorge.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right down that.
It's where they had the, I went to a thing about where they, uh, that they used to film, film movies here. Ah.
So you've been there, you just didn't realize.
I didn't really know.
The museum is upstairs.
Okay.
Their exhibits.
Yep.
So how to go and pick our.
We're open.
Okay, so there's a new neighbors group, did you say? Is there monthly or weekly or?
How do they get a hold of new neighbors?
It's monthly. It's monthly. Yeah, and I, I can't remember the last.
On Tuesday morning, happy happy. You know where the happy is?
Yeah.
But how do they get a hold of new neighbors and what do you have to talk to them? So that's.
Well, that's their group, so we can see what they do.
And I think it takes a long time to get on their, on their program.
Yeah, it's, they, they do it way in advance, like a year and a half.
Um, I have a neighbor that belongs to neighbors, and I have presented three different programs there myself. Um, historical, so they, they are interested, you know.
Yeah, it's just a matter of trying to gather.
They are going to read and watch other.
So, just to kind of refocus here, so we're talking about going out to groups to get people more involved in a subcommittee, or just to get feedback on ways to?
Feedback and input on what they, what they feel should be, um, a focus of this historic preservation plan. What do they see as, um, the resources, historic resources of this community? And how, another aspect is, um, how do they feel they would learn more about this, um, ways that they would be, I don't know, getting more involved if they had seen a presentation, new website, um.
So we want to get feedback.
When anyone, yeah, definitely.
We want to get feedback that way versus the subcommittee of trying to bring in some people into a group, or are we talking about?
A subcommittee would be developed within our group here and maybe some other, um, local participation, um, to help us do those presentations to those groups.
Okay, okay.
Because I don't think I could do it all myself.
You mean, the way we should ramp that up quickly, if we're planning on getting that feedback for our scope, and then we're planning to do that within the year, I mean, we.
That's why I'm, I'm thinking at least a year, if not a little longer.
So we, we got about 17 minutes left before we, before they start.
We could do.
Do we need to try to figure out how we want to break this up into subcommittees? There's, I guess, kind of two things here between the, meaning participation. Maybe looking at expanding on this outline.
Um, if I had a, if we had another subcommittee or a committee helping me draw in and figuring out, or mapping out other resources, and looking at the previous survey districts, I shouldn't say districts, I remember designated areas, um, to really establish what still needs to be done in terms of surveys and, and, and looking at, um, what was the other one? Big one. Primary architecture, things that, um, if there's like a timeline or a seeing a pattern, architectural pattern of development that we might want to look at, and trends that are architectural trends that are visible in this community in different areas, um, determining those.
That, that, I think that's important.
Yeah, it's important.
Focuses on, on that particular aspect.
Yeah, that would be what that, um, subcommittee would look at. Um, I, it'd be like windshield surveys going around and trying to determine, okay, this is obviously old Canyon City, this is when you start going to the 1930s, 1940s development, 1960s development, where those are all sort of mapping out, um, and prioritizing what areas we would like to serve or receive.
I'd be willing to help coordinate the outreach and participation. Try to bring a few thoughts together, bring some people together to discuss that.
And I know Rochelle is very interested in doing that as well. Um, so if we.
Use email, they can set up some, a get together, look at topics and stuff.
You can do that at the museum?
Yeah.
I would be willing to help on, on the first part, talking about at least, like, out, like, significant guidance on where to go with that.
This one's, that, that's the tough one.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you almost sort of have to know, um,
It's almost as if I'm sitting next to you while you do it, so I don't want it all beyond you, but on St. Donut, I'd like to help on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Definitely all.
And we might, yeah, pursue some other, other people, uh, to help out on that, on, on that as well.
You know, there's some people around still, I think, that were involved in previous efforts. Uh, I've got a 1983, uh, Downtown Development Corporation plan.
Yeah.
That had a report submitted by Bob Solomon.
Okay, well, I don't know how to get a hold of him.
And I think Sammy Whitner was the person that signed up on some of the historic preservation documents. And she's at the artist gallery, right?
Sammy Berman, yes.
Oh, that's Sammy Berman, well, but.
That's Sammy Berman. Sammy. And another one is Judy Juret. Oh, yeah, she's been here, and they've been very involved for years.
Okay, well, yeah.
So maybe sit down with some of those people, listen to them, or something like that. I'm glad that, whatever you need me to do.
Storm, we could get her.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I'll reach out to Bob for sure. Um, Margaret, I don't know Sammy. I have Sammy Berman.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the same one, the same person.
I don't.
I thought it might.
No.
Yeah, Sammy's there all the way.
Well, yeah, Sammy's been here all of life. Um, is there anybody else that would be interested in, uh, doing like formulary?
I know about like Sam Dexter, some of those people that are still involved presenting to you.
Oh, yeah, that's one of the other groups I think we need to coordinate with early on, is the person who's here.
Right, yeah, I know they're going to be focused on that. I can reach out to Stacy.
Um, I think there's somebody else involved in the downtown one that's still around that.
Beth Catchmar, I don't know, she hasn't been here for a very long time, like, what, 20 years?
Beth, Beth Catchmar? She's, she's still here.
I know.
Do, um.
Yeah, she would, she runs herself.
She cares.
She's very busy, yeah.
She's very busy, but I.
At least answer some questions, to be, to sit down.
Yeah, I think it'd be.
There's five questions I want you to ask, and see if she would be involved, because I value her, because she's another one of the bump outs. She and I, every time we get together, we're very good friends.
Well, then, you might want to talk to her one on one then, sure.
I don't.
Okay.
She and I are pretty discreet.
Agreed to disagree. Especially when we get, yeah, to that point where.
Yeah. Now, she was on the Tourism Council for how long?
She's still there.
She's still there?
She's a purger.
Yeah. Now, what about somebody from the gorge?
I can reach out to, um, Peggy.
Peggy, there.
Um, I don't know if she'd be interested in doing, it'd be more of the outreach.
I think the guy is the only one that I, I really am trying to do.
Um, in terms of the historic context, um, stuff, I will, Bob Solomon,
Okay.
Margaret Storm, and, um, trying to think of somebody else that would be interested.
We could get some input on some of the residential areas. I mean, we, we tend to gravitate toward downtown, but our, our historic residential neighborhoods are important.
Loretta, Loretta, Bailey.
There you go. Got it.
And to think about how we. And to think about how we can help preserve those and factor that into weatherization and cold and stuff like that.
Okay, that might, I'll talk to Kathy too.
Has Bryn, Bryn, have you been interested in anything?
Bryn is on the, the board of the museum, of the.
Prison museum.
Prison museum.
Yeah.
And he's been very responsive to the friends in the museum and the history center.
Yeah, so I can reach out to him. Says he has a.
So it sounds like we've got to loosely form two committees, one for community participation and.
So we'll have to reach out to these individuals and make sure that they would be interested in it and that hopefully by the next meeting, in which case, if they are interested, we can formally help them as part of a subcommittee.
So subcommittees do not have any public meetings?
Uh, no. So the subcommittee can be, yeah, without any formal meeting process.
Report back.
Yeah, they would report back.
And get documented through that process.
But we, the formation of those subcommittees does have to be formally coordinated. So now that we've got some names that we want to improve and people we want to improve, if they want to be involved, we can throw on that.
What do you think about the second?
We've got the community participation in the.
I have Rochelle and Jim as the, I can be involved in that to some degree.
I think.
Okay, tell me the other committee. So which two committees are you talking about?
Uh, community participation plan.
And the other one is?
Historic context.
The H C P E B.
If you can come up with some evidence for next. No, it has to be, it has to be a cute thing with a mask on.
Yeah, Chris and I for sure. And then I'll reach out to the other people that we sort of listed and then.
Now, if you guys have any questions.
Yep. Kelly, Larry, Porter, you and you and whenever you need me to help out with the other one.
So now being connected to the commission, would it be okay with you guys if I approached newspaper and had a weekly column, DIY, and then some pictures and historical facts about certain.
Now, they do have, yeah, they come back in time and they have had for many, many years. And so I would talk to Carrie Cantor. She, because she.
They do it now on Mondays back in time?
Okay. I think I've seen that, yeah. But this would be more of a small FYI, just a short piece, not, you know, sort of.
And something like that could go on Carol.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
And then I get my news on Spartans on my Spartans app and they have Canyon City part on that if you go there and they take that from the kids.
Go in and go on one, one, one Carol, it's the age, Jeffers.
Okay, what is this Carol?
Carol.
1400 is the local area.
This is the local rate. So it's in the phone book, you have the phone book still.
Facebook? Yeah.
Yeah.
Carol and 1400. 1400 F. And then what was the woman's name that you?
It's a man by the name of Tay, T A Y, Jeffers. And the lady that runs the station is really interesting, Miss Raven, is Carrie Jacobs, K A R I Jacobs. And she might be somebody else in Washington.
Yep, definitely.
You mentioned Carrie Canterbury.
Carrie Canterbury, but the name's.
Spelled differently.
Yes, C A R I.
And Carrie Jacobs is K.
K A R I. Carrie Jacobs lives downtown in historic.
I know. Okay. I think we gotta.
Anything else I think we gotta? I think we need to put this on every agenda.
I will contact these people in the Thursday.
Regular meetings, so maybe we can accomplish something, you know, regular meetings as well as, so make that a proper guide on every one of our agendas.
Yeah.
It's been a joy.